Yeah.
That ain't right. I guess you ever had a dog pound there, a dog catcher?
Yeah, we did.
Get that too.
Yeah.
Always somebody, yeah. Always somebody get.
Bill, I have six o'clock. Was that agree with everybody? On time. Okay, welcome to the Cherry Valley City Council meeting, October twenty first. We generally open in prayer and tonight we have Brother Stuart Brooks with us, sure it's a resident of the Cherry Valley area. He's pastor of Ellis Chapel and we'd like for Stu to lead us in opening prayer, please.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for your many blessings, Lord. Lord, thank you for your presence here. Lord, I lift each one of these people here up to you, Lord. And Lord, we just want to seek you and honor you and glorify you in everything we do, Lord. No, your word tells us if we seek you first and honor you and then love our neighbors, Lord, that everything will be provided for us. Understanding, love, kindness and harmony and peace, Lord. And Lord, I just leave to each person up on this board to you and the mayor, Lord, and everyone that's involved in this. Lord, just to make the right decisions, to do the things that's right for the citizens and the community here in Cherry Valley, Lord. And Lord, again, we just want to be in harmony and peace, that only you can give understanding to each and every one of us. It's all in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen.
Mr. Danford, please.
Congratulations to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Dennis Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Rowland.
Here.
Councilmember Brad Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember William White.
Here.
Councilmember Ricky Lays.
Here.
Minutes from the August twelfth meeting. We had discussed those and council let y'all speak about that. We suggested some changes.
Here's some changes that were suggested here. I sent Stacy on it. That all the council members got on it. We've all agreed on it. That we need to have removed in minutes.
Second. That is agreement with the council?
Motion to have it removed.
Yeah, motion to have it removed.
Okay.
Is it second? To that, to take it? All in favor?
Uh.
Okay. But the.
Can I need motion to approve them with the, with the.
Your, your, your. Now.
That taken now. I'll get it right in a minute.
Make the motion to approve on the twelve minutes with these edits.
Is there a second? Someone move second?
Three.
All in favor?
Uh.
Okay. And September ninth minutes, we're, we're just presenting tonight or yesterday, I believe. So we don't make time to review those or?
There is one error that Brad pointed out in the backstop. I've got an extra number in there in the backstop block bid. It's got the number eight in the word high. So I would have taken that out of that that y'all presented. I didn't, unless anybody else has noticed something different that you missed.
I haven't, I haven't, I've never seen you the type of, or anything, so I would, I would go ahead and move to approve the minutes as a minute after they're, then with that taken out.
Okay.
With that tied up.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any other? Financial report, Miss Stacy, you will go with this.
Um, in the city park, there was a check wrote to Caldwell for fifty-five, twenty-four. I hope I documented that right. It said a steel handle. Is that right? Tamper handle is what it was called on the.
Oh, two of them?
Yeah, it's two of them.
It's a tamper. It's a something that you use to pack, pack the ground with for the pigeon bound. So we got two of them for that and then when we do cold patch, I just wait and got two and when we have one for that.
Okay. Um, so I wasn't exactly sure what that was. And then a car service was one forty-three, fifty-four and that was for the scoreboard remote. And then of the police special, you'll see a withdrawal for four thousand dollars. And you'll see it going into the police equipment as a credit for the body camera. And then the general fund finished up the body camera payment of six sixty-seven, fifty-eight. Those were wrote to, wrote to utility. And then alert radar is one thirty-five. That's where Jamie had the radar certified. And then Ross tire for five thirty-six, forty, and that was for brush, tires on the brush truck.
Is that that new truck or is it a different truck?
Different truck.
Well, that's not.
A different truck.
Different truck.
Okay.
Looks like a pickup truck.
Oh, okay.
Any further questions regarding financial accounts?
Now, then we go ahead and approve finances.
Is there a second?
There.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, Mr. Wayne, here on the agenda, sir.
Okay, um, y'all carry on the business. That can be on the class.
Could be heard to be last.
Okay.
All right, department reports. Uh, police and street.
All right, uh, we had a standard show up last week to do an audit for the police department. We come out good. Only issue we have, we have one gentleman that did not complete his mandatory twenty-four hours a year training. So we decided best to remove him from our, our roster. So that's what we done another that pretty good shape. The street department, Mr. Ricky quit. So sometime in the spring may look to fill that position going forward. Right now, I just take your hand and pops up. The ball fields, uh, we got the footing pour for the backstop wall. As well as the pad for the storage building that we were putting at the back for storage. They both look really good. The, uh, on the block wall. I messed up. Uh, one percent wrong, my fault. Speaking with Mr. Pittman on the blocks, he gave me a labor price. And the more I thought of it, I thought that was a little cheap. So I called him. I said, does this include materials and labor? Because that's usually how we get quotes. You give labor and material. No, it's labor. So we called Caldwell, got the material, materials four thousand forty-six, fifty-seven, just for the material. So, and his labor price is fifty-five hundred. So I told him we had to pump brakes. Uh, I'd have to turn it for you guys to, uh, to move forward.
Last month, we approved up to fifty-five hundred or fifty-five or fifty-eight?
Up to fifty-five if it was a four block.
Right, right. And that's where I was, I'll, I'll take responsibility. I should have been more precise talking to him.
So what was the, what was the other one we got? It was two quotes, didn't it? And we went to him or was he the only?
He was the only one.
Oh, he was the only one, okay.
It was four thousand if it was a three block high and fifty-five, we, y'all approved up to fifty-five hundred if it was four block high.
Right.
Okay. That coattails with the labor and the block, the material itself.
The material itself is forty-six, fifty-seven. And the labor is fifty-five hundred. Total ten, one, five, seven.
That is for two block wall, one.
Yes, that's softball field and. And baseball field, I guess.
Is that what you call a backstop?
Yeah, yes.
So we pretty much doubled our price on that thing.
Again, I'll take responsibility.
Well, is that gonna still be within budget on what we've got as far as part of, do, do we have the money available to double that or do we need to, what do we do? Will it be okay or to go that route or do we need to just go a different area?
We've, we've got the, the money to do it. It's just, uh, he's only a quote at a half.
Okay.
Uh, so again, that's where you guys.
So since the last meeting, the fence has been put up in front of the dugouts.
Yes, uh, Mr. Wayne's got signed up for my job. Y'all get a chance to overcheck it out.
And the footing has been poured.
Footing has been poured.
So we're at the point to give it up today, Jamie. Uh, the blocks are, when block wall is laid, we then can order the.
The net.
The netting.
So the only thing we've got left for these deals to be ready to play ball. Softball's already practicing on the softball field on Sundays.
We're waiting on the electrical.
Uh, spoke with Adam last week. He said he's about two weeks out to get the electrical done. We get the block wall done, get the net ordered. Now ain't the time to put the net up. She had to take it down in the winter anyway because you don't want to wish your freezing on the net stretching it. Then finish filling in the irrigation spots and we run the irrigation pipes in the field and we're ready to play ball.
So it's one of the last main hurdle for you guys.
It was the last, I mean, yeah, the last little bit of it.
Uh, additional work that we understand needs to be done is some painting.
Yes, yes, yes. We're gonna, we're gonna do that.
Right.
Uh, matter of fact, some of the cherry fest members are gonna, uh, definitely we're gonna paint it. Once the block wall is done. Because it's all gonna be, the dugouts and block walls are gonna be the same color. So we'll, uh, we'll get all that painted at one time.
Well, Jamie, you're the, you're the ones been talking to everybody. You're, you're the, you're the honcho on this. So if, if this is our last main hurdle and, and this is what the direction that you think is the best route to go, then I'm, you know, then, then I'm gonna take your word for it. We'll go with that route. If, if it is what it is, I mean, it's, it's, you know, there's nothing we can do about that. And that's the quote he gave us. That's the only one we got. So that's forever we have to go. I don't mind. If that's your recommendation, I don't mind putting forth a motion to go ahead and increase it for that. Since we had the funds available and it's not gonna put us in a bind, to go ahead and just, just complete the work on the rest of the block and, uh, go forward.
And the blocks are already delivered, right?
Yes. Blocks were charged to the Cherry Valley account, so there is no markup on behalf of the contractor.
Correct.
Because you do run in the benefit.
Yes. I'll go ahead and.
It's gonna be four wall, four block, huh? Can you say if it's gonna be four or three?
It's four blocks. It's gonna make four blocks. I'll go ahead and.
Really, we proceed. And with Jamie's recommendation. A total of ten, one fifty-seven, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and twelve cents.
And twelve cents, okay.
Is that including tax on that invoice, Jamie?
Yes, yes, on the block. Yes, yes, sorry.
Motion by Brad?
Yeah, I second.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
Do it, sir.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna like this, the, the net. Once we get this face, you know, just the net, we don't want to put the net up down here.
Right, it'll be, that'll be a spring, well, it'll be March, we'll put the net up.
Letting the net up to get here to do the electrical.
Yeah.
Okay. City park expense report. Miss Stacy, any comments on that?
Today, we spent three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents on the park. And that included the, uh, expenses I called out earlier that was sent to Caldwell lumber. The visa for the scoreboard remote, uh, I'm sorry, I did not, I did not add this in. It was Ballard for the, the metal.
The poles.
The poles. That was twenty-one thousand, eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents on there. So that includes all of that up to date on there.
Are there any, uh, outstanding bills that we haven't paid or work completing? Victor Yates was paid, uh.
We've got the.
Yeah, that's the transcorp.
Yeah, that's it. Everything else is paid.
Just Jeremy Ellison's been paid.
Okay. All right. Cherry Valley Fire Payroll Report.
For the month of, this is so small, y'all. The month of September, they, uh, they had quite a few runs on there. It was eleven hundred and fifty dollars. And then, uh, it continued on this one sheet and then three hundred and seventy on the other. So it was a total of like fourteen hundred and some dollars. So they've been getting quite a few medical calls on that, but that's where we are. And then they are not here tonight, uh, due to a personal issue in the family.
It may be time to bring that up. Shane's mother, Mr. Pat Bell passed away. And I was gonna bring it up, I, I just don't have, uh, what is the, uh, policy of the city with respect to your flyers or anything of that nature? What is going on there?
We, normally we all just pitch in out of our own pockets. Uh, in the past, the mayors have said, send the flowers, city pay for it. We take the write-up. Uh, but they do frown on that. We're not supposed to send it and spend with city funds on that, but we have in the past. But we have that write-up on audits, so.
It's one time that.
I mean, we sent one to a, a council member that served for like long periods of time and it just so happened when they picked that range of checks, the check, it was the one of them and she did overlook that one, but she's like, don't do that again. I'm like, who got it, but?
What is the sentiment of the council? Uh, now, correct me here, those who knew Ms. Pat better than I, uh, is Duane, uh, the chief at Bay Village?
Yes.
Okay. And Shane is the chief here at Cherry Valley.
And Ms. Pat did fill in for me until she got sick. Well, actually, she did it while she was sick. I didn't know it.
What's the thought or the consensus of the city about, uh, recognizing that, be it flyers or, uh, contribution to the, uh, fire department fund or, uh, what thoughts do y'all have, please?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. We need to, you know, yeah, we do something. I, I don't care. I don't have an opinion on what, but yeah, I would agree. Yeah, we can do something, you know.
Okay, something, let's narrow that down.
Well, I mean, if you want to send flowers, that's fine. We can do that. Um, that would probably, uh, that would probably mean more to the family than donating to the fire department for Shane or whoever. I mean, it would be mean more, meaningful to the family or, uh, if they have a certain thing and more you send to and leave with flowers or.
I wonder if the, I wonder if the judiciary addresses any, uh, subject or provides any suggestions.
Haven't seen it.
I haven't either, as well.
Well, it, 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 it is. If they got something to send and leave with flowers, yeah, absolutely do something like that and, and, you know, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it at all if you did that.
All right, so the city doesn't get themed?
Excuse me, Lord?
And will donate, so the city doesn't get themed with anything.
Okay.
Has that?
Okay.
Yes, sir. Of course, my book holds that in the card and I had to give you that. It's over.
I'll have to go see my manager.
Oh, you just throw your debit card in there and that'll. You'll be playing basketball.
Need business? There's no unfinished business. New business, Miss Stacy, address this village cards, please.
For the certified mileage, we have to do this each year and we have to pass a resolution. The city can increase the mileage up to five percent. You can go down as low as zero percent. The last two years, we've currently held it at four point seven five. And in the budget, that is, uh, where twenty-five thousand dollars of our budget has come each year. If you decrease it, of course, that number will decrease. If you increase it to the five, it'll increase that number a little bit, but five is the maximum. The city of Wind is at five. If y'all, uh, the city of Parkin was at three point seven five. And the city hit a ridge at one time was two percent, but I did not check on what they were at this time. So that's up to y'all, what y'all set that number at.
On this one, since we just had our water rate increase just go out, just through the roof, I don't believe we need to increase anything. I, I really don't want to increase anything else.
Place that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I would, I'll go ahead and make that as a motion that we do not increase. Uh, you want to keep it the same again for one more year? Uh, I would move that we keep this at the current rate and do not increase.
Second by Will. All in favor?
Uh.
I need to get Will second. That's the way I'm prepared.
All right. Audit report for December twenty twenty-four.
When received in August meeting, we had just had the exit meeting and there was no findings on the audit report. And this is the official report that was, uh, presented to the legislative committee. It went to the committee on September the eleventh, um, and they didn't have anything else that come back. They didn't see anything, so that, we just have to present that to council on there, unless y'all have any questions about it or.
This is the same one we received in the mail?
Yes, that's the same one that you should have received in the mail. I think they sent Brad's up here. Uh, but you should have received one in the mail as well.
Do we need to, do we need to do anything with that at Pax or do we have that or is that just for our general information?
Generally, what they do is if me and the mayor, if there was write-ups on there and we did not tell y'all that we, there was some discrepancies, um, say there, I had a write-up and I didn't tell y'all about it, then that gives y'all the right to look at that report and say, hey, you know, we didn't correct this. So if there is any write-ups, then we have to write a letter to the head auditor. And then if they don't like our answer, then we have to go through litigation and things, but.
For example, like the flowers.
Like the flowers, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Then we just won't do, you know, we won't, we won't do it anymore.
Get your hands slapped, nobody can.
All right.
Sounds good.
Witcher Auctions, eighty-six, thirty-five. You have a form here, invoice, where the city purchased a rescue unit. It was seventy-eight hundred dollars was the bid with a ten percent premium plus title fee search. Gives a total of eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Two thousand four, Ford, Ford F-four fifty, uh, Ford before service truck. It has a bed on it. We've done this, uh, we had previously discussed in the council meeting, the bed itself, the one we found was fifteen thousand dollars. A used bed from the city, a used bed from the city of Wind. This come up in a sale, uh, here at Witcher Auction, Witcher Farms here south of Cherry Valley. Uh, and it was purchased at that price. The understanding here, the potential benefits for this, Miss Stacy mentioned that there have been numerous, uh, health calls, uh, emergency calls to the fire department. This ring can be outfitted to take care of that. As to where there won't be a fire, a huge pumper truck being sent. In addition to this, depending upon the outfitting of this, according to the full-time firemen, this has the potential to, uh, provide assistance in our, our ISO rating. Which the ISO rating establishes, uh, uh, the amount of insurance premium you pay on your properties. So we're looking, we're currently in ISO five, I believe, is it? Uh, looking to drop that to an ISO four rating. And according to Farm Bureau, that is a nine and a half to ten percent drop in your insurance premiums on your homes. So this is twofold. This truck itself is able to maneuver and get into places that the, uh, big pumper truck is unable to, uh, access. So it has, has been paid. It was paid out of the, uh, community fund, grant funds. Any questions about this or? We need authorization?
Yes, please.
I'm having a motion.
Will motion is our second.
Sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Uh.
The next item is Rowan Automotive. Three thousand, three hundred, twenty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. This is for emergency repairs to the, uh, two thousand seventeen Ford, uh, police vehicle. Water pump, uh, was, was, Jamie, tell us what was going on there.
So the fuel, the fuel pump went out and, uh, we can add before the fuel pump went out, we were just having to add coolant to it before every shift. So we took it to Wind, AJ's where we take everything and, uh, I said, hey, check where we're, see if there's a leak somewhere or whatever. Turns out the water pump was leaking and the explorers have to turn on water pump. And he said they couldn't do it there. They had to take it to a digger. Got the digger shipped and just that alone was gonna be four thousand dollars because they gotta take the whole top of the motor part to get to it. And they had to replace it. So Rowan was out of Jonesboro. Had done the fuel pump, the water pump, replaced the timing chain, timing chain guides, tensioners, uh, spark plugs, change the oil for that price that you see there.
There is an invoice in the package indicating what was done. And this also includes a twelve thousand mile warranty.
Correct. And every cent, it didn't run.
So you're back up two cars.
Back up two cars, okay.
All right.
I make a motion to pay this.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
While we're talking about police vehicles, Jamie and I had reached out to the city of Harrisburg. Can you share what they have, Jamie, or what the case is?
So about a year and a half ago, they received.
Fourteen, I believe.
Uh, seven, eight. I think seven, I can't remember. Seven, eight, uh, Chevy Impalas from the city of Sherwood. Already equipped out. So I had reached out to them when we were down there because we had just sold the Charger. So we were down with just the Durango. And talked to the chief of Harrisburg and, and he wants to give us one. It's, it's, it's runs, it's fully equipped and it's a little older model. It's got a cage, it's got the siren, uh, blue lights. And I told him, we, you know, give me a price. They said free. Ain't gonna argue that price at all. So, uh, he's getting with his city attorney to try to make sure we can, they can give us one. And make sure it's done correctly.
Sure.
So I told him, we'd be glad to, be glad to have it.
Absolutely.
Remind me tomorrow, I have a email from the league where we discussed about getting the Charger from the county and replacing it with other equipment. And I think it says in there about cities donating to other. I may be wrong, but I think that statue that they sent on that, giving us the approval, has something in there.
Autorizations.
Autorizations, you can do that. I think there's like the agreement, like if, that you can't go out and sell it.
Right.
You know, you'd have to give it back like to city Harrisburg or give them first options if you wanted to sell it, but you can donate, I think, between cities as long as they're in grants.
We just wear it out and give it back. Have a look himself.
Uh, the next item is Corey Lloyd. Uh, Corey gave us a bid of ten thousand, five hundred dollars on the, uh, dugouts. And, uh, uh, building the beaches and glove, helmet rack, bat boxes. And there is a copy in your hand down here. Uh, he has been paid that ten thousand, five hundred, but on his last invoice, uh, there was forty-five hundred dollars remaining. And his, uh, in, there were forty-five hundred remaining on the previously approved amount of ten-five. And he submitted an invoice of. And he submitted an invoice of sixty-three eighteen oh nine. We had authorization, we paid him forty-five hundred. So there's eighteen hundred and eighteen dollars and nine cents remaining. Now the, Jamie can better explain where this overage originated or how it came about being.
So I had, he originally had quoted, he was gonna build the hills, the bat boxes out of plywood. Uh, I did not know that, but when we got over there, I said, I think that would look better if one by, one by twelves. Would look a lot cleaner. And then if y'all have never seen the dugouts, the rafters are sitting on the block walls, we're open. So it's having a problem with birds sitting up our perch and doing their business down the wall. So I asked him if he could take a one by twelve and cut it and put it up there and seal that off. Which is a lot of cutting, you get cut out for every raptor. So that's what they done. And those one by twelves are, one board without tax is thirty-eight sixty-four. They're high in dollars, so, uh, that's where that come from.
This covers four dugouts.
Correct.
This will come out of the, the park grant money. We still have that money? We haven't paid that, we got the over, short, any, any balance? Okay, well, if, again, it's, this is Jamie's project, so.
It's a higher quality material. I, I, again, I encourage everyone to go over there and look. Get out, walk inside of one of the dugouts and just look. Cause then you, you kind of get what I'm talking about. As some of y'all, some of y'all have done over there, you kind of, it's hard to see it from the road. Pull up there, walk out on the fields, uh, you can drive on the road. But it's, you'll, you'll see, I mean, the high school baseball coach came over Friday. And he said this is gonna be the nicest field in our district, but once we're completed, so. And that's, that was what we wanted when we started meeting, but...
Sure. Well, I would go ahead and, uh, move that we had that eighteen hundred dollars of the park money.
All in favor? Next, uh, we have an invoice from Extreme Signs and Designs for sixty-six oh three ninety. That was putting up all the poles at the park, painting them, and the cost of the, uh, paint. The poles are blue?
Correct, the backstop poles are blue. Now keep in mind, there's leveling the poles as well, and those blue poles are sixty-four foot long by eleven inches. Obi outside and under, uh, one twelve foot in the ground. And they poured the concrete with bagged concrete per hole, so. It took everything they had, that whole truck they had to get up to the top was everything it wanted, so. They had to work that out for them doing it, but that's what that was for.
And the backstop poles are taller than we previously thought to?
Correct, we added, uh, and we'll go back to that Ballard deal, we added twenty foot. Jeremy Rice had come up and we were, we were looking at the field, he's the athletic field services guy. He said, you know, as far as these fields are gonna be together, you're gonna be hitting foul balls on each field as you play. He said, and you're at the point right now, you can do something about it, as opposed to coming in later on and adding to it, which would be a nightmare. He said, I'd add twenty foot onto it, so we did that, and it made a world of difference. So if they hit a foul ball from this field on this field, they probably ain't gonna play for us no more.
That's a big safety issue, then?
Big safety issue, yes. Plus now he said poles.
Have we approved the pre- now, now for this previous?
They, they, it was talked about in there, but, uh...
I was remembering this number, this number right here was taken in my mind.
Right, we had talked about it, but we never really, we had never approved. And then he did say that Extreme was gonna do it, but we didn't get it from them.
Someone in favor of making a motion to pay this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and put that motion up. Go ahead and pay that.
A second. All in favor? Personnel policy handbook changes?
Um, I took all of the, after we had the meeting on the personnel policy handbook, and I didn't read through the whole handbook. Uh, we didn't make changes but to certain areas. And then I just, the pages have been to match the material in the handbook unless we make any other changes. And then the fire department bylaws are referenced to unemployment policies. The vacation rate was changed. The miscellaneous leave was sixty days and was changed to thirty days. And then employee must notify the council at least thirty days in advance of the meeting, that was changed from sixty days. Uh, the workouts were changed eight to four thirty with thirty minutes for lunch. And then the travel policy, uh, if a city vehicle is available and employees choose to take their own personal vehicle mileage will reimburse with the federal government rate at the time of travel. If a city vehicle is not available at the time of travel, mileage will be reimbursed to the state of Arkansas rate at the time of travel. Is that correct so far? And then the reimbursement for travel bills are employed, I'm sorry, reimbursement for travel bills are employees sent on city's behalf for a day trip is fifty dollars per day for an employee. And reimbursement request will only be considered for payment of a company by itemized receipts and a copy of the agenda, no reimbursement will be issued on any bills provided, tips, gratuities, alcoholic beverages, and other re- un-reimbursable expenses. And I'm gonna take out that work credit right there. Uh, and then employees must request a city vehicle seven days prior to travel. On number seven, um, we didn't discuss that in the meeting on there, but me and the mayor discussed that. And I believe this is what we put on, on my recorder treasurer duties, that I would keep up with that, so. If the council's okay with that, I would just put that the recorder treasurer shall name of that. And then another thing I did reach out, we had talked about the drug testing and it was still kind of up in the air. Uh, I did reach out to our care, since they are just right here in our back door. Uh, this is the email from Garrett Andrews, and he said they will do the drug screening, uh, for forty-five dollars. And he's got an authorization form here that the employee would have to take with them. And then he said the drug test results could be done one of two ways, they can send them directly to the city, or they could give them to the employee, or the employee and the city could give them. So I told him that this was just something that we were in talks about, that we, for new hires, um, and I wasn't sure. And he said that that would be fine, that we could get back with him, and I said it may be one a year. I said it may be two a year, I said it may be whatever, and he said that was fine because that form would have who was responsible in the billing. And he said he could work with us. So if the council wants to look at that, we can bring that back up and read it. And the only other thing that, uh, attached to the policy was the expectations that we all signed with the mayor on there. I don't know if he lets y'all know about that, but I wanted to let y'all have a copy of that as well. And then everybody had a copy and it does our personnel policy handbook and our files.
Any questions or comments? Okay, number eight.
Do we want to go ahead and hold, um, do the drug test or hold off on that? Do we wait, bring it back next month and let them look? I mean, that's fine if they want to.
I'm just, I'm sitting here thinking, Stacy, about will that prolong our, uh, personnel handling?
No, sir, cause what I'll, if we just, if they approve this, changes here, then I'll send that copy of them out. And then if they do that, I'll just amend it and put that, we'll throw it to our care.
Are y'all, uh...
I mean, cause what if the council wants?
As council, uh, this email that Stacy's explained regarding the, uh, drug testing and drug screening for future employees, or are you okay with, uh, going with this as it is?
I think we are too.
Everybody fine?
Results be sent back to the city.
We have that option established?
We have, we can have options sent back to the city, to come back to the, to the mayor or department head or...
Committee down this is not necessarily to be approved. Since we've already discussed this?
No.
Water meter policy?
That was Ricky one of them.
Uh, hello. My church, uh, water meter that was damaged. Realize the cost is five hundred dollars for that. You know, gun ladder. I understand the policy, church understands the policy. But is there any way that can be, we can work out some of the payments on this? I mean, you get somebody five hundred dollars to live. I'm, I'm just asking. I'm sure this is probably, maybe it's come up the board.
It has been an issue as far as...
We can, we can, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty good lid. I said our meter got damaged, I, I'm not sure how it got damaged, but it's, it was damaged.
So this policy was established when Adam was in, Adam Love was murdered?
This is really before we even got the meters, we set, we established this, it's on the line.
Yeah, we got, this was established in February and the meters were installed in March, April.
And what do we understand the actual cost of replacing that meter is, is it, do we know?
I have to look exactly what it is on there, what the, like the meter, the setter of...
Well, this, let me just, let me kind of read this letter, this, this is the letter that the church got, says, to you of concern, the city passed electronic reading meter policy in February twenty-four. The policy states that if any damages caused to the meter, the customer is responsible for the repairs. The damages must be paid within thirty days or services will be shut off. Failure to pay these damages could result in criminal charges in Cross County District Court or Cherry Valley Division. Uh, the meter, your meter has been damaged and required replacement. The damage cost is five hundred dollars. That's just, I just think that's a, I mean, that's a pretty good lead.
I'm curious as to what the actual cost is, to, what it costs the city or the water department to replace that meter, bring it back to its, uh, acceptable condition. Is five, was five hundred, was five hundred an arbitrary number or is that pretty close to what the cost is?
Uh, couldn't tell you.
I'd have to go look it up, cause I don't remember.
So we want to, uh, I think the first, in my mind, I mean, y'all speak out, my mind is determining what the cost is. How much outlay the city has to repair that and bring it back to that standard. Given the economy, the times that we're in and everything, I'd hate to know we're making money on that.
I, I've got a question. So this piece of paper here with Adam Love, this was picked, pressed by the previous council. So this is actually our policy, right? Cause it's never been changed, so this is still going on there. Okay. And it says if the meter is broken or damaged, it's caused by the owner, tenants, or occupants, then they have to pay for it. But we don't know, who wrote that? This, this policy, this meter, right?
Right.
So they shouldn't have got that letter then, shouldn't they, if they didn't break it?
We're the owner of the meter, though, the church was. So we got the letter.
But, yeah, okay, but you didn't break it, but the church didn't break it.
I'm, I'm old age, I didn't, I didn't know, cause I don't, I didn't know there.
My, my question, why did they get that letter? If this is our policy, and I mean, it should be up to the city, according to this, it should be up to not them to fix it. Or am I misreading this?
No, that's correct.
I mean, that, that's right, right?
This is actual policy, I took, I printed this from the minutes app, when Ricky asked me for it, I just copied and pasted it, and then that way y'all could look at it, I was printing it out on separate sheet.
You're, I just say it's caused by the owner.
Yeah, caused by the owner, they, they didn't break it, so they shouldn't have got that letter. Am I, am I wrong in that thinking? So they shouldn't be charged a single penny to fix that meter towards the mix because they didn't break it. The city should replace it if it's broken and they didn't cause the problem, right?
It also says the cost of repair or replacement to be charged. So there should be a, I'm confident that the actual amount is not five hundred dollars either.
Yeah, I mean, it is charged to the customer, but I mean, if they didn't break it, they shouldn't be charged, right?
You know, Stacy, those meters are, you know, like, if there's certain part of it that's broke can be replaced, or is it just?
If, there's a, there's a black round thing on top of it, and then it's got like a little bit of a lid, like a hump. And if that part on there, if you, when you get down inside of that, that's what actually causes it to ring. Now if you pull, if you pull the, what I've understood, you pull the blue lid up on there, there's a wire that goes from that to that, then that wire can be replaced. But that black part of it, it's, it's the ring, it's the whole meter. That's what I've understood. Now the wire can be replaced, the lid, I think can be replaced, but once that...
So maybe it's not a, maybe it's not a, uh, and I'm trying to vaguely remember, did, did we not maybe mimic that off of Winds?
It was, it was off of, we used Winds.
Wind, what Wind was doing.
At Harrisburg, I believe it was.
That's, I mean, I'm just, and I may be totally wrong on that. What they did at the time, we, we were set, well, I think, do we have to set a policy or something? Or we did set a policy at that time?
It's the electronic read meter policy that would be for these, right? So I, I don't think that, that church should have to be charged a single penny if they didn't break it.
Cause we spent so much on, uh, they had brought up to the council, they wanted to have a policy on there.
So I'd say, I'm glad you brought that to our attention, but I'd say tell them, well, they don't pay nothing to get the meter fixed. That's just my thinking.
How does anyone identify if they caused the issue or not, because there's still water meters that aren't set right. Blue lid is still up, so if someone's walking down the street and goes over his steps on it, it's gonna break someone else's water meter, that person.
I was under the impression that there's still some water boxes that are not loaded for those to be installed properly. Maybe not.
I don't know, I'm just gonna answer that.
I think they would be here, don't they?
It would be nice if he was here to be a land judge. A letter from the water department, we got all that. And, uh, I've, you know, y'all can root me, y'all can do what you want to, but I wouldn't be in favor of charging a penny. Just have, have the water department fix the meter, you know, since they didn't cause it. But that's the same.
Do we want, it appears that it may be the consensus that this policy needs to be revised or altered in some manner? What I'm thinking, what I'm hearing, speaking.
This is what Cal will provide to.
Right.
Right now, yeah.
But it appears that, uh, we may be charging five hundred dollars as opposed to the cost of repair or replacement, is what it says. So we need to determine what that actually is. And then... Thinking, thinking about this out loud, y'all jump in and push me in the right direction here. I'm of the opinion, what I'm hearing is that we need to determine what the actual repair and replacement cost is. Then we need to, uh, delay any findings on this letter the church has and, and come up with a idea how to determine, determine exactly what the repair or replacement cost is, as well as address this, uh... statement regarding who broke it and who's responsible. That's going to be difficult to do. That's almost an unis, I would say.
And listen, Jamie, sitting across the street with the video camera out in the bushes, you ain't, you're not going to know who that is.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have nothing against the church at all, but are these considerations going to be for individuals also?
Yes. That's what we're talking about, adjusting the policy.
Absolutely. If you didn't break it, your water meter gets broken, you shouldn't have had a single penny, you didn't break it. According to this policy, you didn't break it, you might have paid it.
You tried, tried to charge me five hundred dollars, I'm like, I didn't break it.
Yeah, that, that, that's probably the difficult part to implement.
It's like a gray area.
Absolutely.
You know, this may try, it's a little quick, I wonder.
We should, that's the wire, it corroded and stopped, yeah.
I mean, I can, I can say that.
Are y'all okay with table this to next month?
Yeah, absolutely.
Coming up with the actual cost and then giving thought and consideration? Is there a proper way, or what is a proper way to determine who broke it?
Well, we don't want people just going around and trying to break them or not taking caution. You know, I told my guys, you know, I've got a mobile business, and I tell my guys, stay three foot away from them. You know, don't, don't get close to them.
Take a weed here.
Take a weed here, don't, do not get, no, don't just stay away from them. Because I, I don't, I'm not paying for them. And if they pull into one of my yards and it's broke, take a picture of it and see it.
Right.
So.
Let's give thought and consideration and address that next month.
I agree.
Is that okay?
I agree.
So this will come up on the, in my understanding of the council, this is going to come up on the shut-off policy, so hold off until the policies are reviewed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Number nine, garbage pickup. We ran a poll, and I think it, uh, the poll, you have option of twenty-five dollars monthly garbage pickup fee with a container provided. And the other option was twenty dollars a month, no container provided. That, that's no longer valid. Mister Ramsey from Weiner area withdrew his bid to provide service to the city. So trying to combine this into a simple position, we have Deadmans and we have, uh, Justin here, who has offered a twenty-five dollar a month garbage pickup with container provided. Deadmans is about twenty dollars a month with container. The council, and I know Stacy has fielded a number of phone calls, I've had several myself about the quality of service that Deadmans is providing. And that's what generated this review and opportunity to look into an option. So, uh, the last time I looked at the, uh, poll, it was increasingly in favor of the twenty-five dollars and container as opposed to. So that's where we are here at this point. And, uh, any, any of you gentlemen had feedback from area re, city residents or whatever? And in our last meeting, and those that I've talked to, uh, it seems to me the consensus by a sizable margin, people would pay five dollars a month to have that container. That's the ones who shared their thoughts with me. So I'm through talking, so let's, let's discuss this and see which way we want to move here.
Well, the, uh, the first bid we had, I forget who they were, was Branty, is that their name? They withdrawn their bid altogether.
Correct.
So the current choices we have right now, we can stay where we are, or we can choose the, the twenty-five dollar option, correct?
Correct.
Which is lower.
Right, yeah, and, uh, I, I'm, I'm like you, it's, it's.
You know, Justin or Justin?
My name is Justin, but my business is Jason.
It kind of started as a joke, and it's really turned into something, and we can't go back now, so.
Justin is here, uh, who would represent a local company, uh, should we decide to go in that route? So, uh.
The only thing that I have heard is the people that's told me about it, they didn't, they liked it now that the container's provided. But I mean, now that Branty's withdrew, that's not as big of a deal, but they liked having the container provided.
Well, you know, you get to do anything else.
Yeah, but they, but then they had issues with Deadmans, the way like, you know, the trash cans were being thrown, and trash can being picked up, and being missed on certain days and.
I think complaints on Deadmans are, uh, as far as I'm concerned, we can do the, go with the new, uh, if the Jason, Justin, and all, all them. Go off Facebook survey, basically, is the ones that, that, that did it, so that, that is what I would be willing to do as far as consensus goes.
That's in the form of a motion.
And I would put that in the form of a motion, I move that we do the, uh, you, you require a year contract, is that right? Is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
I would, uh, I would go ahead and move that we put in for the year, some of your contract with our, with our new trash service and then go for it.
Before we get a second, or are you going to leave it on the water bill or are they going to be?
Not well.
When I talk to you, prefer it left on the water bill?
Yes. I would prefer that, but I mean, it's a, y'all.
I would prefer it too, yeah, I don't give a.
I, and you don't come, take a.
Did I get back, did I get back and I ain't nobody picking up the trash?
Or you go outside a trash can and talk and then repose it? Yeah, that'd be funny, yeah.
So with the city building.
Yeah, keep on working. It's just easier to do.
We talked to Stacy and you said, how would we feel about it, and you let us know, who hadn't paid their water bill, send us a list.
Now, I did reach out, uh, today with some other cities and about for, it was a mixed review, some cities said that if they, they sent their sanitation people a list of addresses, and they don't pick up the trash, they go pick up a can and, till the, till the bill's paid. Some cities said, no, we still can pick up the trash regardless, even if they didn't pay, because they didn't want the trash on their uh, city streets, so.
Y'all tell us what to do there.
What do we do with Deadmans, because somebody will like, he just picks it up.
He just pick, he just still picks it up.
I get it.
I mean, I, that was just something, you know, that was brought up and then but I did put it out there, and I mean, that was, some layers come back and said, we, you know, we tried doing it this way, like, not picking it up, but then the people kept calling it out there.
I was going to say that's.
And then the court system is kind of a.
Yeah, then it becomes a big problem.
Yeah, big issue.
Right. So I mean, it was a, kind of like a fifty-fifty, some said it works, some say it don't work, so.
So you need six weeks if you can, approximately?
Yeah, about six weeks, could be sooner. Um, I'll, I'll talk to her.
So by the first of the year, you think, will we get it?
Should be.
Okay. Saying, and we're not under contract with Deadmans, we can cancel any, basically, wait until Thursday, they know, just let them know we're not doing it next month. Right?
Or are you with their January?
Well, this would be to get this approved first.
Right, well, I was saying, if they're going to be the one your contract, when would they want to start?
Right, when we, yeah, you want it January to January, or how?
January.
Yeah, okay.
Do they have it by January?
He, he, he thought he could.
I don't know for sure, I'll talk to her tomorrow, and I'll know a better timeframe.
What about, I had her ten weeks to January.
Should be, put it down.
Okay, I'll just put January one, twenty twenty-third.
Do you have the dumpsters for businesses?
I don't. I don't have a dumpster. He's got a truck pit, I'm sure, he's dumped the back of his truck. I'm playing, I'm not going to do that.
Hey, what is that thing?
I've got a set of apartments over there, I've got one with a dumpster there.
You do?
When I think of Orchard's got a dumpster, dude, Exile's got a dumpster.
Dumpster store, I believe.
Do you have any small, could containers?
I mean, mine could be, mine could be changed to cans, it's just everybody have to have their own can.
Right.
And.
I've told people in the past, people that have called me with dumpsters, that I could do, you know, like four or five cans even, versus a dumpster.
I've got, I've got eight units over there, so it'd be.
Yeah.
Everybody would expect a two.
Right. I mean, that would be fine.
Is that who does the Orchard, is that Deadmans does it?
Yes.
Deadmans does not, but it's, it's built in the city, though.
They're all built in the city.
Are they?
I want to say Exxon. I might be wrong, but I don't think theirs is through the Edmonds, I'll have to double check, because I think there was there was an ordeal, I don't remember the whole thing, but the council approved for them to go outside, I think, I'll have to check on theirs, but Orchard I know, and then yours is on the city.
What about Palmetto, do you know anything, recall that Palmetto?
I think the dollar store was probably Deadmans.
One of the two is not on Deadmans.
Yeah.
One is and one isn't, if I'm not mistaken, but I will double check.
Tell me about Exxon.
Exxon and the dollar store, yes. And then the Stark Apartments.
Is there an option to switch the people that have the Deadman's dumpsters to whoever Exxon or Dollar General has?
That may be, I mean, I think they reached out, I think, is what that was, I think they reached out and measured it themselves, I think, yeah.
Oh. So they're not through whoever has the other service, is it, it's not through the city?
It's not through the city, not true. And then we have a few that's on, a few of the county roads that have, um, like, County Road two thirty-five. We have a few people that has city services that, uh, they have it on third water bill, but I mean, I can get you a complete list, that's not a problem.
Right.
So, yeah.
Right. Like, if they get, I mean, whoever, whatever customer gets city trash pickup, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other discussion or timeframe or date you need Stacy?
I just need a second. I've got a one-year contract with the city, dealing the billing, six weeks approximately to get the cans, with approximately start date of January one, twenty twenty-six, and then I'm going to check on those four and get, get a list of addresses.
All right, Brad has placed a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Oh, no. Dumpster, are we going to contact somebody else for dumpsters, or?
We're going to know, we'll probably notify those businesses that Deadman Services is going to cease.
So does it, your apartments, has each person got their own water bill, I don't know?
Yes.
So you can.
Water is separate.
So you can have the trash added to it, okay.
Any other discussion or question?
I see.
All in favor? Office cleaning. Right. We talked last in one of the previous meetings about placing a ad on Facebook about anyone that might be interested in cleaning the office here, uh, there were five requests, uh, that came to me on that. Five se, uh, five different ladies actually showed up. I showed them what we were needing, that is, cleaning this room, the hallway, the break room, and the bathroom. The city providing the supplies necessary to do that. And, uh, uh, cleaning would consist of, but not limited to the following, sweeping, mopping, dusting, removing garbage and trash, cleaning the sink, vanity and cupboard. So, uh, each, uh, three of those five ladies submitted a bids for that, and this is a bid for a one-time cleaning. It was explained to them that cleaning maybe once a month, it may be twice a month, but, uh, we have a bid from Miss Valerie Johnson, lives out here on Million Dollar Road. Her bid is a hundred and fifty dollars per cleaning. We have a bid from Miss Vicki Hyble, uh, Miss Vicki's bid is seventy-five dollars per cleaning, and bid for Miss Christie Phillips, bid is thirty dollars to clean the city hall. Christie and Miss Valerie provided references, people that they have cleaned for and are currently clean. And then, uh, uh, Miss Vicki, uh, she's been keeping the house for fifty years, and, uh, was what she shared with us, and so, uh, I did learn something in talking to these ladies, who tell my ignorant respect to cleaning, but, uh, when he was talking about, when he was talking about, I said, I think you need to sweep and then mop? And they said, no, we vacuum nowadays, so, uh, they, but, the, the, they're, each of those three, or each of the five that I showed, uh, suggested that, so I was corrected in that, so, and, uh, they were going to run the vacuum, then do the, the wet mopping, so, all right. That is what I have with respect to that, uh. Miss Christie is Brad's wife, so I think he would excuse himself from.
Absolutely.
Discussion or conclusion?
Um, I, uh, honestly, i- i- if you'd like, um, I know, you know, I know you like the a consensus here, and I'm not against that. Um, I, I received an email today from the municipal league, and it, uh, it, it specifically says that in a nutshell, the city council sets the procedures for hiring and firing the employees, and there are legislative acts for adopting the employee handbooks and the stuff that we do. Uh, however, the councils are not in a good position to run the day-to-day work of the city. And, uh, so the cities delegate the authority over employment managers to the mayor or the department head. So, um, I hate to put this, I hate to put the monkey on your back, man. But it says it's your, it's your job.
I understand that.
But no, yeah, absolutely, I'm going to repeat myself in the discussion all again, I mean, it'd be a constant interest, and I don't want weigh in on anything, but, um, I was just going to put that on there.
Well, I will move forward with it then.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rescue One. Purchase, that's going to be, did I write that order?
I didn't, I didn't know.
It don't make no sense, does it? Okay, Rescue, Rescue One is the current truck that is disabled. Due to a broken front, and checking with that to have it repaired, and the cost was going to be substantial. So I visited with the, uh, tire department, and due to Miss Pat's passing, uh, we don't have a representative tonight. So they are checking on the best way, I suggested then we need to do something with that truck. It is sit there, it's becoming an eyesore, uh, insurance, cost, uh, things of that nature. So by next meeting, I will suggest to them that they have us an option there. One gentleman has offered twenty-five hundred dollars for the motor. But, uh, there are services out there that can sell it, uh, I think Tyler showed with me on via phone call a little ago. They're checking with the auction company about it, uh, checking with the, uh, scrap metal place, that type of thing, so, uh, they need to maximize their efforts and we need to come up with a liquidation plan for us to do something with that, with the truck. Police car. We addressed the, uh, bill on that, and I think maybe the, that, I mean, I broke that down with respect to that the city of Harrisburg was considering a, uh, possible gift to the city of Chair Valley. A possible gift to the city of Cherry Valley.
Two if you can.
Budget restraints. I just wanted to bring that attention to department heads and everybody. We're over budget on a number of items. A number of them are self-inflicted and some are beyond our control. Uh, we spent thirty-nine hundred on that election. We didn't know it was coming. Three thousand dollars on a settlement, on a lawsuit. We have went back and done a review on our insurance coverage and Stacy has uh, gotten, gotten additional items insured. That we were sitting there fully exposed, so. We'll be very careful about expenditures coming down to end of the year because we'll have to pass a revised budget to address these issues. So keeping that in mind. Is where we are on that and perhaps not concerns about that. I just wanna share that with the, with the council. So, uh, department heads, I'll be speaking to them about, uh, we'll be careful to be prudent in our spending these last three months. All right. Recorders. In second-class cities have duties prescribed by ordinance. And uh. You have ordinance one ninety-four here and uh, on the back of that are the, is exhibit A, the duties of recorder treasurer. So uh. As Stacy uh, provided that and it's pretty comprehensive and conclusive, so. The uh, it is recommended by effective clerks association as well as AML. The ordinance we passed to establish that, so. Take a look at that. An opportunity to read that for a minute, please.
We'll have to suspend the ordinance first and then we'll have to read by title only. You know, with a motion second, then. Motion second and then we have to do second one.
Any questions regarding this ordinance? It is what will be established as. The uh, job description for the duties for the treasurer recorder established by the council. Should we adopt this? We need to suspend the motions, uh. And read it. By title only three separate times and then we move in comparison to the law.
What are, what's number sixteen? Is that those abbreviations? The CCRs and the new sanctions and.
That is what the, it's the Dunst number that you have to have and the uh. CCRs is certified, it's a short name, but you have to have those over apply for grants. So you have to go in and you have what they call an EUI. It's a unique identification number.
Yeah, Dunst is a favorable good one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. It is a, what is it? Assigned to eat, favorite, sounds like your EIN or your tax.
Yeah, kinda like your EIN, but it's an additional to our EIN. It's, they look it up by those numbers and a cage number is about five or six numbers and letters. That Dunst is real long and then unique, uh, is like a VIN number. It's really long. And they keep changing that every year, so next year when they have a ten number again on top of it, maybe something different. We used to just have a CCR and a Dunst number, but now you have a unique identification number.
If you don't suspend it, we read it in three different meetings, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, are these the exhaustive list or should we read it the first month, check everything, make sure there's nothing that should be added or deleted? Maybe they're leave the same thing, just do the three months or do we want to rush through it and? Do it all tonight?
You can't do it all tonight under the emergency clause and uh, by reading it three times, uh.
I mean, it. It looks pretty comprehensive, um, but whatever you, whatever you think.
I just always think doing those three reads in one night, but. And uh, I'll work together on this in the municipal league, so this is all.
Yeah, the city attorney did the uh, ordinance. The only thing I did go back and add was the, the mayor said to add the emergency clause in our copy and paste it. And then we worked together on the. On the duties on there, but.
Yeah, that were. This, this, this guy's a lot of the uh. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty detailed. Did a good job on it.
Is there a timeframe on the ministers reported to us like a week at a time, five days, three days, two days?
What, like getting the minutes back to you? There is no time limit on there. There's no policy that says.
Set up before the meeting.
There's no policy, so none either.
Okay. Would that be something you wanna add, like a, put it like a. What are you talking about, like send the draft minutes and the, the financials and all that prior to the meeting? Is that what you're talking about, Mark?
Well, she said it yesterday.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you wanna set a timeline, like a, a specific five days before the meeting or is that what you're?
I don't know about five days, it's just that everyone's, what everyone's doing, a day of reading is quite quick.
Yeah. I, I didn't get to review them as well as I'd like to have. Due to the time of the year and what. Those are, you typically do those fairly quickly after the meeting.
Usually pretty quickly on there. Now, I didn't on, uh, September took me a little while longer, uh, to do that, but usually if.
It's like there too after the meeting, seem like before.
Sometimes I can, sometimes I can't. Usually within a week after the meeting, I usually can have those complete. Now, the financial statements, uh.
Right. They're putting the end of the month.
Well, I ha- I'm, what I have to do, I have to go online and I pull all the offline because I don't get the statements in time usually for the council meeting. Like I just got one yesterday and I got another one today to actually get ready for Will to sign off on them. So I go online and pull those and usually I ha- can have those within, if it's a full week, I can have them usually done on Friday. But if it's like, say the middle of the week's the first, it may be Monday or Tuesday of the next week. Kinda depends on the workflow of that.
We could, uh, there's nothing that says the minutes and financials have to be sent at the same time, either, is it? So completion of minutes, Stacy could forward those upon her completion of them.
I mean, I can send, like, I mean, if there's something that comes across, like if we. So like when Ricky requested for the water policy, I could have went, you know, I'd go ahead and send that out if you wanted to, but then some people say it bogs up my emails, so I mean, it just kinda. If y'all want it like all at one time, if you want it. Like as it comes along or how do you want it?
Well, these new emails we got, this is the only thing I get of all the emails, so it's.
Yeah.
But that's not an issue.
Okay.
Um. Would we be able to say, listen, for example, if we wanted to go March, try to thought, put in here maybe an amendment, have the minutes filed for the draft within. Three days of the next day of meeting of the city council. Would that be an okay thing to, to amend that, put in here? Could we go ahead and amend that and go ahead and get approved now?
Would be received at least three days.
Would be received prior.
Three days prior to the meeting.
Would something like that be acceptable or do you want more than three days?
Three days, three days would be Tuesday, so we're talking, what, Saturday?
Well, be the Friday before would meet the FOIA agenda law.
What do you say, business days?
Okay.
How many would be business days? Would that be okay? Three business days prior to the next meeting?
Yeah, that would give, usually would build in a weekend for us to look at it. Or for council, when everyone's looking at it.
Well, y'all might be a lot faster than I do, but. I can read it and go do something else and come back.
Your thing is numbers.
So three days prior to next.
Yeah, three business, business days.
Three business days prior to next council meeting.
Would that be okay with you, Will? Would that be okay?
Sounds good.
Add that as number twenty-eight. If you want to put it at the bottom of the list.
That'd be fine. So we need to, what's the proper process to do?
We need to suspend the rules to read by title only.
Your motion to suspend the rule of motion?
Second.
All in favor? Uh, okay. Okay.
The first reading would be by title only.
Ordinance one ninety-four, an ordinance prescribing the duties of the cherry valley recorder treasurer. Make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Second reading, an ordinance prescribe, gen- uh, ordinance one ninety-four, an ordinance prescribing the duties of the cherry valley recorder treasurer.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
And third, reading three, ordinance one ninety-four, an ordinance prescribing the duties of the cherry valley recorder treasurer.
Motion.
Second.
I need a, I have to read the emergency clause.
Emergency clause, right. This ordinance being necessary for the immediate protection of the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Cherry Valley, Arkansas. Emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full force, effect from and after its passage.
We need a motion?
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Stacy educated us on this AI policy that is just.
Yeah, there is, um, this has been quite a bit of talk within the clerks' world because. A lot of people are using AI now to like transcribe minutes, uh, transcribe their work, transcribe their papers. And the thing with the AI, which is artificial intelligence, it can't say who made the motion, who said that. And so the municipal lead, talking through all of it, suggested that the cities pass an artificial intelligence policy that it cannot be used. With, for any city purposes, uh, on there. Now, we had talked about it like free in the future, it might be great because it transcribed for us, but. We, one lady tried it and it was just. It said a whole bunch of other stuff. It didn't really say what was said and they tried to do them like verbatim and we don't wanna do them that way. So municipal lead, by after doing research with their IT, said that they thought that we needed to have. An artificial intelligence policy that it would not be allowed.
As old as I am, anything new's got fallacy to it. Did it, the cheeks have worked out a good lot of times, so.
I mean, you know, it's a good tool, but you gotta do that and reread and make sure everything it says is correct, cause it'll, it'll steer you around if you're not careful, so.
Well, then sometimes I think like they're saying, well, AI said that the city of Cherry Valley has five thousand people in it.
Right.
But we only have five hundred and seventy-five people, so all the information that you get from AI is not totally accurate either, so.
I remember there was a time in California. You're in New York.
For Illinois.
Illinois, that's right.
Any share of that? Any further discussion on the AI policy?
None at all.
Motion?
Cloud, go ahead and make that motion clear.
All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, November meeting date, uh, the second Tuesday is Veterans Day. And out of courtesy and respect to our veterans. Stacy shared with me as well, she and I visited on this, uh. Uh, I think city in, historically, in the past, did have a meeting on Veterans Day and that was somewhat a question, uh, to question to some extent, so. I think, uh, courtesy and respect to our veterans, we need to reschedule the November meeting. I know the city of Wind is doing theirs on Monday.
The tenth.
Tenth, okay. Is Monday the tenth a conflict with anyone? Monday night the tenth?
I can't do it on Mondays, but yeah, that'd be fine. It works best for everybody. Move it a week later, it's cool.
Okay.
I think.
Is Monday the tenth good with you gentlemen? You, Fred or Mike, Brad and you know?
What, whatever day is that week, can you be available?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll be available Tuesday. Unless you don't have a day at club or whatever.
That works for me. Uh, Monday, that, I'm not sure yet. Um, my wife called. When, when they released my daughter from the boner, they told us to, to do another, uh, uh, doctor appointment. And the next one they had available is either on November the first or November the tenth. Mondays is the only time the doctor can be there. And uh, so they told me it's. They, they know the tenth is open, but they're gonna try to get her in the week prior to like third, whatever, so November the third. Um, and they said that was iffy, so. I might be here on, on the tenth, uh, depending on what happens over there. I mean, it's just a checkup, they're just gonna do another thing and make sure she's okay. But it's, it's Memphis, so who knows how long it'll take. So I might be here on my, I don't know.
The quorum is.
On Thursday?
Well, March on, 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 on Monday is.
On Tuesdays.
I mean, I'm sorry, Tuesday's it.
But it doesn't hurt for me to be absent.
What constitutes a quorum? If they're both gone.
Two.
Okay.
What is the week before that? What's the date come now?
November the third, the, uh, November the fourth is the Tuesday.
That's like two weeks from there, yeah.
I mean, I can get the financials done, it's just I won't meet the deadline that the council has set up for financials. If you wanna do it the week prior. I mean, I can do it, but. It just may be Monday, you may get them the day before because if the first falls on a Saturday, then I can't pull the interest and stuff.
Well, thirty-first is on Friday, the first is on Saturday.
So it, I mean, I could get them done on Monday, but like I said, it would just give you that one day that would do them on that, if you wanted to do it the week before. So Mark can. But that's still kinda iffy with you though, isn't it?
It's either the third or the tenth, I'm not sure.
So the fourth you could be here.
Yeah, 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 any, any other day will be fine. It's just the Mondays is the only days that doctors are over there.
Do you believe you can get that found out?
I don't know, that's what, you know, you told me today, you know, so I, I, I don't. I, I don't know.
Is the doctor's department in, uh?
Memphis, right, right. Yeah, if it was Jonesboro, we could probably be out of here and not come back, but.
Which kind of?
Exactly, I don't know.
Oh, you don't know that far?
Don't have any idea. I would say the, the third or the tenth is have a lot to do.
I'm gonna look.
Yeah. So. It could be third, it could be all that, I don't know.
Yeah, trust your decision or anything.
Oh, don't do that, don't, don't.
Wait, there's no, hold on, let's get like committees, are there?
There might be.
Brad about to put his finger. Don't throw that.
All right. Uh, so the options appear to be.
Fourth.
Tuesday the fourth or Monday the tenth?
Monday the tenth.
Uh, can we? Do you have an idea how soon you might know?
Uh, hopefully we'll know sometime this week, I hope, um, because she, she talked to him today and the receptionist would say, well, she. Thought there was gonna be a cancellation, but she didn't know. She had to confirm it back with him as far as on the, the third. We're trying to get it down on the third.
You can't be here on Monday though, right?
On the tenth, Mark can't be here.
So let's uh. Let's shoot for Monday the tenth, is that okay, Mark? With the option of the fourth, if, if Brad can't be here. He can't be here on the tenth, let's go with the fourth.
Okay, just, the council just understands. I mean, I'll get it till Monday, but it'd just be Monday afternoon probably by time of four all of it.
All right. We got a couple of questions. We've been contacting about a couple of lots that the city owns, a lot on highway one, uh. Lot on Highway one, uh you know familiar where that is there next to the old Napa Park store. Uh be on the east side of Highway one, uh kinda across from uh. Kinda across from Desmond Murphy's old welding shop.
Well.
There's a lot there uh and there's a lot beside the Orchard Apartments that the city owns. Going back to lot on Highway one, a couple of inquiries about. People setting up there to uh sell their uh their goods, be it t-shirts, whatever. Uh moving a building in, one even suggested moving a building in, having a secondhand store. Stacy reached out to a number of her coworkers and uh their counterparts in other cities. Uh we have their policies. I haven't had an opportunity to look at them much. But the issue I see with that lot is that there is no entrance. It's gonna cost a culvert and that being commercial, the uh highway park won't provide it. Be a cost and expense to the city. Uh I don't know what kind of return we'll get on that. One of the people who contacted me was from Kent, Missouri, who set up on the weekends to sell t-shirts. Apparently they have family here because that's what he mentioned. And then secondly was a secondhand store and. It appears from my brief reading of these other understandings from other cities that all the costs appear to be put up on the renter. With the exception of the other culprit and that would be. Electric, water, things of that nature uh is all there. So I basically wanted to throw that out to you and let you get some talk to it. It's not pressing. I talked to the local gentleman and he is uh, he's not moved forward on his request yet or gaining gathering information. For him to make the determination what he can do. Then the lot beside Orchard Apartments. That that was donated to the city uh sometime ago, I understand. There are two lots between that lot and forty-two highway. Right there beside the little telephone office. Bobby Johnson owns that lot on adjacent to the highway and Mr. McCrery owns the lot behind it. Then the city of Cherry Valley has a lot just to the east of the Orchard Apartments, okay? Mr. McCrery has approached Jamie about donating that to the city. Is is the second lot. With the stipulation I understand that Mr. Johnson donate his. I've reached out to Bobby and he wants to sit down and have him and talk to us, talk to me about it so. I'll I'll be getting back to y'all with that information. Uh. I don't know if the potential to acquire that those properties, that enhance the city as far as enticing. Some future businesses or something. Could we use that as motivating factor to uh for that in particular? So uh, now Stacy, I believe you shared with me uh if we rent it, is taxable? So we would have to pay taxes on any rent accumulated there. Uh so. The lot by Orchard Apartments is zone R three, I admit it's the residential. If I believe Jamie and I love. I did not think to look about the lot on that one. I'm I'm not certain. You think it's commercial written?
Yes.
Commercial, okay. So gives you an idea uh. A lot of folks here, city may want to hang on to them as a attempt to grow the town or entice businesses or whatever. Y'all be thinking about that as we uh. Discuss that next month, is that okay if we do that?
You have your bits and building man, but maybe you forward their contact to make you break that.
And that's your renewables, yeah, they're gonna they're gonna be their base office, that's the solar farm.
Right.
Now on that lot by the Orchard Apartments.
It's either.
Well no, it's either January, Debbie was saying that that lot holds water.
It is.
And that's why the lady donated it to the city.
That's what she could get easily.
And it's landlocked.
And it's landlocked and I think the other one. It's one the city was sued over and the city won the suit. It may and I believe it had a trailer on it at one time, so it may have services there but I don't know about.
There's a sewer hole, sewer manhole there. I heard it was number two.
But it did have, I wanna say that had a trailer on it at one time.
There is a pole in there.
Temporary pole there, power pole, temporary power pole.
That was the purban property. That's what I call the purban property and then we ended up getting the property in the. I think that's the I think that's the property, I may be wrong, but I know one of the orchards, somebody said it held water so.
It held, you're right. It had to be some fill-in dirt running in it in that process. Okay, I got three more things here that just popped up. Did we get a check from Woodruff Electric yet?
Yes, I got it today.
Uh what I reached out to Woodruff Electric even though they're they don't service our city. Uh they donated three hundred and fifty dollars to the city for use on uh. I sent them two options, that was to help pour the concrete pad at the food court or to maybe buy an awning for the food court pad.
Which the pad had.
The pad was poured this week, paid for a twenty by twenty pad. Uh once that concrete cures well, we'll get the picnic tables set over there on top of it. And I'll be getting a letter out to Woodruff Electric thanking them for their contribution and everything, they were very nice. Uh the pad was poured at food court uh sixteen.
Sixteen forty, twenty-six.
Yeah sixteen hundred and forty dollars for the concrete. Uh they done the work, done the framing, reinforcement, web, wire, things. So it is there. Uh the only other thing I have is we are, we signed off on the. FEMA repairs for road, county road two thirty-five, the one that the culverts were standing on. Their cost estimate put in two culverts, uh twenty-two foot long, sixty inches in diameter and. To cover the top side which would be the east side with rip ramp to uh slow down any type of erosion or deterioration. Fifty-six thousand dollars. With fourteen thousand that'd be about from the city. Now, we if we can get it done cheaper, it's fine. The culverts themselves will be six thousand dollars. So that leaves you the gravel and the rock and the things. So I think we beat their price substantially. In addition to that, those of you who have an opportunity, pull in down there at the uh rifle range, shooting range for the sewer pot. And see the white rock and chat that the solar farm has given us. The fourteen thousand dollar portion which is twenty-five percent for the city, that can be offset by the work we do or donations or whatever. And the solar farm is currently compiling uh a vein for the donated rock and material that they've given us. It is substantial, but there is a lot of rock down there.
I think their truck carries about three yards round about.
I I meant to count to the scene when I roll in.
And on Friday there was eighty.
Eighty.
Eighty pounds.
Two hundred and forty yards material. Some of that's already been put on county road three thirty-eight, Flatiron Brook Road. There to fill in some holes before this one.
You said two hundred and forty yards per pile?
No, 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 uh.
Three, three yards per pile.
Estimated three yards.
That brings up uh one other thing I I wanna get out of here maybe. Uh. The culvert at Charlotte Marlins entrance, her north culvert, which is the old Lewis Riley Liquor Store. That culvert has collapsed. Uh they, R- RDOT still maintains that is a commercial property. They will not assist with that culvert in any way. Charlotte has authorized me to have that culvert removed. And Jamie and I will work on that Thursday at the latest, tomorrow Thursday.
I gotta more calling today, I got more so.
There actually weathered short three point three inches of rain over the weekend. Uh starting Friday night through Tuesday, or that what they're saying this morning. That will back water back up into the haul condition again. We've we've been fighting that every rain so. I think we can get some relief by removing that culvert.
How can they say that that's not commercial?
Charlotte said she moved there in ninety-four or ninety-six, I have a document. They still show it to me. And she has, we made the request as a city and that they made that finding that it was commercial. She has made a request and now she has made our second request to RDOT headquarters at Wynn. To inquire about assistance for replacing that culvert.
I thought when we put in the culvert to throw up out there, we had to do it all out of pocket at best. Pay to have it put in, we had to buy a permit or something like that. Once they come out and approved it, the state took over that, the culvert. If anything happened, they had to deal with it.
It was new construction.
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha.
That's why.
Yeah, they they when you talk about permits, what they call a bond, you have to approve your bond.
Yeah, we had to put in so much money.
Heard a lot and heard they commercial or houses.
Well if he's giving them, Lewis Riley Junior, he lives in New York. The tax. Tax, tax, the act, that's it. It shows a, it shows a residential. Of course that's what was assessed for taxes because there's a house. Liquor store was blown up, yeah, but.
What's the road that Jim Jim the old next door, Jim Mills lives here, is it Lace?
No.
Wall.
Wall, is it Wall Street? The city replaced that culvert and it was the RDOT said it was not in there right away. On that one. So to keep the drainage there, we ended up paying it and that's why we put all that in there, but that was a substantial fee too to keep the water draining.
Just for anybody's question, RDOT claims they don't have a uh an easement, east of railroad tracks.
All the way to city limits, yeah.
Yes. All the way to the east end of the west end of the bridge.
So that gives us the right to do whatever we wanna do apparently.
Do you say RDOT said they don't have an easement?
They don't have.
East, east of railroad track.
Yep.
They said it's very common in older cities.
They told us that's why we had to move our fence.
Yeah.
Depends on when you ask.
They told us that's why we couldn't, we had to move our fence back because they said that it was part of the property and it was their easement and they had to be able to get down there.
Cause we tried to get them to help plant some of these ditches out down the hallway. Now that may be essential on uh drainage area, ditch.
It had something to do with that bridge.
Yeah.
I'm trying to recall.
They might have somebody to feed around it.
I don't know, I know Mr. Dennis contacted us and then after that Mr. Calacop contacted us and I was waiting on our fence for that.
When they were set up on the highway with the track, what all did they dig out? I couldn't see where they're arming them anymore. Besides just driving track on outside the road.
They had one angle. They did get out some but it was, I I can't explain and. Explain to you exactly what they done, nor can I understand what they done. And I called and asked and the track was sitting there for a week and a half or thereabouts.
Well that is old coal, they ain't dug that out. No, that's gonna do wash that coal out down there. Cause they dug it below the culvert. So the water's gotta build up and just start running out.
To melt it below the culvert?
Yeah, they dug it out, they just dug it out and it's that at the culvert, that happened by my ditch.
And so that water's gonna back up and that's the further north you come, the higher it's gonna push back into haul condition and so those areas.
And then it's gonna wash out around up under that culvert.
Just like.
Three in a cavity and blow it out.
Just like a three oh with a three oh three, that big culvert, possession of keys? No, they put, done it to three times and it kept washing out in the big rain.
Anything else? Is there a motion to your?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank y'all very much, appreciate it.